Call this meeting of the Pittsburgh City Commission to order. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. The first thing on the agenda is proclamation for Pittsburgh Beautiful Day. Jeff, you want to come on up? Wherever you want to stand. What's your good side? That's not true. All right. So as mayor, the proclamation for Pittsburgh Beautiful. Whereas Pittsburgh Beautiful was established in 1998, and whereas for the past 20 years, members of this volunteer group have worked tirelessly to enhance the city's appearance by planting flowers, bushes, and other greenery, cleaning areas of the city, encouraging citizens to refrain from littering, and rewarding citizens who have made improvements to their properties. And whereas Pittsburgh Beautiful members have participated in numerous projects such as placing welcome signs at the entrances to the city, planting flowers in the downtown urns and hanging baskets, beautifying the RV and bike parks, improving the fencing and planters at the farmer's market pavilion, and planting and maintaining several public areas located throughout our city. And whereas, the city of Pittsburgh appreciates the beautification initiatives sponsored by the members of Pittsburgh Beautiful. Now, therefore, I, Jeremy Johnson, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 14th, 2018, as Pittsburgh Beautiful Day and congratulate the members of this valuable organization on 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Pittsburgh. Right, please.
I'm the president of Pittsburgh Beautiful, but if the group, if members of the club would please stand up and just be recognized. Thank you for coming. Meeting this month that was brought to our attention that we were 20 years old. I guess we didn't, we didn't know that at the time, but I want to thank the city of Pittsburgh. I want to especially thank Kim Vogel and Toby Book for all their help in, in all the projects that we take on. It's a, it's a group of about 20 people, and I think, and I hope we've made an impact in the city of Pittsburgh. I think we have. We've, we were blessed with some folks that left us some funds that were able to do a lot of the work that we do. And it's not just pulling weeds. It's, and even when we do pull weeds, you know, sometimes we have fun doing it, which is kind of amazing. So I would just throw out this plug. We meet the first Monday of every month at noon at the chamber office. I would encourage anyone that would like to know more about Pittsburgh Beautiful or become a member, there's, there's no membership. All you need to do is be able and willing to work on projects that we do. I would encourage you to come and help us. It's a fun deal. We appreciate the support, like I said, of the city, but more importantly, we just enjoy trying to keep Pittsburgh beautiful and looking nice for the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. Next up is public input. If there is anyone here to share for public input, I'd ask that you come forward, state your name and address.
Again, my name is Brian Hanson. I was here almost six months ago, and I own McCarthy's Pub down at Third Street, and I'm here to talk about Randy Valela's properties once again. Since I was there, not one thing has been done. One time in six months that we've had any sort of grass removal, weed removal, and it was after the fact that I had to call Dexter, and then he got on Randy Valela, and that's the only time it's been done. If you drive down there again, it's three to four, five foot tall again, and yet, here I am again. What do we need to do to get this under control? I'm asking you guys, I asked, I've been here multiple times. Not one thing has been removed. Not one piece of equipment has been done. There's stuff down there that is unsafe. There's things standing on jacks. There's a bulldozer down there. It's been there for 20 years probably. What are we going to do about this, guys?
What has, I mean, does the, is Dexter here?
I am here.
Dexter, would you mind speaking to that?
Well, I've called you multiple times personally.
And I think I've visited with you several times out there. So it's not the weeds, it's the bulldozer?
It's everything.
Okay. So we know that that's owned industrial?
Not the side.
Which is commercial.
Correct.
Which is his auto truck. So he's allowed to do what he's doing. He can have the trucks. He can have his truck, his commercial garage. That's what he has. I understand the weeds. We're working with him on the weeds.
Since when?
Well, since about every week, actually. And I know you don't feel it, but I believe we actually sprayed it a week or two ago. I don't have my inspectors here, but I sent a crew out and we sprayed it.
Does that mean you guys are going to charge him back for that?
Yep. And I think he's, he's taking care of the Washington School, which probably doesn't help you much.
But it's an ordinance.
Well, the weeds are an ordinance.
It's a zoning issue.
Right. So that area over there is a mixture of commercial zones and industrial zones. Randy's allowed to do what he's doing in the industrial zone across from you. He's allowed to do what he's doing in the commercial zone next to you.
So until we change the, so until we change the zoning, it's as it is allowed to be?
That's correct.
So vehicles that are half crushed and things of that nature, there was homeless people in, just a few weeks ago, so obviously it's a blight.
Yes. If there's homeless, I haven't witnessed any homeless people over there. I don't know how we address the homeless issue. That's a different issue. As far as the trucks, I could tell you he can do what he's doing.
So is there, Darren, this is maybe a question for you. Is there a vision for the zoning of that area going forward? I know it had kind of come up previously, but...
I can tell you, we've got a vision for it, but right now, it's owned by Randy Valela, who's lived here for a long time and has his own vision. And the end of, you know, it's unfortunate that we were, as we were walking back today with Commissioner McNay, you know, the weeds are always an issue, no matter what the property is, but at the heart of Brian's issue is the zoning, which even if we change the zoning, we're not, he's going to be grandfathered in until he's gone, unless I'm missing something. And I don't know when Brian took over ownership of the bar, but I'm pretty sure the stuff that's industrial was industrial already, and the stuff that's commercial was commercial, and it's just the nature of, Randy's the property owner over there, and we will continue like we do in the three ordinances you see today in the consent agenda, cut down weeds, spray weeds, and bill people for it, but it's not a very good solution to the weed issue. But I think Brian's major problem is probably just the vehicles and the way it looks and zoning wise, until that property changes hands, that's what it's, that's why it's zoned that way.
And I have reached out to Randy, and Randy has talked about putting screening up. He's going to put a fence up between you.
We talked about that three months ago.
Right.
And serials have been done.
Right. Well, I can't make him put it up. If he wants to put it up, put it up to be a good neighbor, that's great. And he suggested he'll do that. I don't know what's on his plate.
So Brian, is this a deterrent to your business?
Absolutely.
So people don't come because of that?
I think so, yeah.
So you talked about the safety issue. What can be done about that?
The safety issue of the homeless going in?
No, of the equipment that's sitting around, people...
That's part of the property.
Is there a fence up to keep people?
There is a fence up around...
There's not a fence.
There's a fence up around the one to the south of you, the commercial property to the west of you.
Correct.
Is the one that Randy says he would like to put a fence up. And when he's going to do that, if it's something that we decide we need to make him do, then we can order him to do it, but it's not a requirement of that zone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dexter.
As I've been there just shy of 15 years, and it's got worse, progressively worse and worse and worse. Please feel free to drive by and take a look at it and see if that's what you want as a neighbor, you know? So we've got to be able to use our codes in our favor, and right now, he holds all the cards, and it's kind of sad.
You know, once again, I didn't, I didn't pay Brian to be here, but it's a good segue to something we were going to talk about, which is, the three ordinances that are on the consent agenda are all about people taking care of their properties, whether it's mowing, whether it's the way they look, and the teeth of the city to really want to get into there and do something, which is get into somebody's business about their private property, which is saying a lot. Right now, it's tough to do in Kansas. We don't have that many statutes. It can be done, but you're going to have to, I mean, all we really do in the worst-case scenario is send people to court, and then we're at the mercy of the judges. It's not something where we can take the property. We can continue to clean it up ourselves and expense the taxpayers, and we do it all the time, and that's why there's $100,000 worth of special assessments in here that may or may never get collected. But it's extremely frustrating, and I'm telling you, if there was an easy answer to get somebody to be responsible and take care of their properties, these meetings would be a lot shorter, because it's something that we continually go through with commercial businesses, with people that are running a business next to an industrial area, and, you know, Henry's sitting right next to me. If he's got some magic bullet, I'd like to see it. But right now, you can't kick people off their property. I can't unzone property that's zoned, and there wasn't a lot of thought given into the how this city was put together before 20 years ago. And so you've got situations like this that are maddening, but it's, other than the weeds, the weeds are definitely something we can, we need to stay on and do a better job of.
Keep in mind, you guys approved Block 22 and put a lot of time, effort, money, and in that, and we're, as a crow flies, one block away from that.
And at the core of your problem is zoning.
Correct.
You know where you're, you know what's zoned across the street from you.
Yeah.
And it was like that before you took ownership of that bar.
I...
And as soon as something happens and we can change that zoning, it'll be, it's on every plan we've got, but right now, I cannot take a property from someone and rezone it. It's not possible.
But it wasn't near as bad when it was all one building till it burned down. That's when it's got worse.
And, but the ownership has not changed.
Correct.
And Randy has, for whatever reason, I would agree with you, done less than more on that property. And, but we will stay on the weeds, and I know that's not your main issue, but man, it's, it's, it's all across, it's throughout the city, you guys. I mean, it's just...
What happens, if something was to happen to Randy and he passed on, what would, what would become of the, would that be on the taxpayers to clean that up like we did the law on Fifth Street?
Take that one, Henry.
You know, I don't know who owns that property. I don't know if it's a corporation, if it's for Randy individually, but, you know, that would be a, you know, if it's a corporation, the corporation lives on, you know, normally when a shareholder dies, that doesn't end the corporation. How if, if an individual passes away, obviously their heirs will inherit the property, so...
Yeah, I'm not touching that one, but I mean, it's...
You get that. Well, I just feel like the only time that it's really ever addressed is if I make a phone call or if I come here. After that, it's outside, out of mind, till I show up again. I know Dexter says he's in contact, but...
Complaints are, we address these things, they're all complaint-driven.
Right.
And that's the answer. You said it right. Until you call, that's when things happen. And that's the same way with any other neighbor in the city, is if they complain about their neighbor, then we can do something about it. We can go look at it. And that's why it happens that way. We don't have people running around town with lawn mowers, waiting to take care of all of these citizens who aren't doing their job, who aren't taking care of their property.
But we do employ codes enforcement folks that should be driving by that daily, if not weekly, and if it's out of compliance for that, it should be addressed that day or that week.
They've got a lot of, they've got a lot of buildings to drive by.
Yeah.
And they've got a lot of, lot of things to inspect.
But the ones that are habitual should be on the primary list of that person.
Yeah, the process, the process isn't friendly in the fact that if it's, if it's 12 inches, and it gets to 12 and a quarter, and we jump out and mow it, administratively, we've probably violated the rules that we have for somebody to get notified, to have a chance to fix it themselves before we send them a $300 bill. The Dollar General's a great example, though. We have the Dollar General and people like Brian that you can bet every six weeks, the phone's going to ring, and the people at the Dollar General, you know, they don't mow it, and the people that live around there call. I mean, so it's, it's never, I just had a good conversation, and she's not here, she said she might show up today and talk about it, with a woman that was complaining about that, and I said, well, there's two people, there's two code enforcement officers. She goes, well, we need 15. And I said, 15 isn't going to change the process, which is, we've got to send them a letter, they've got to get notified, they've got to be given time, and if we do get them to court, the judge usually says, rectify it next number of days, the fine will be why. I mean, it's just, it's a ridiculous process, and...
So that process for habitual offenders, is that our ordinance? Is that a state statute? What, I mean, is there any way to look at shortening that process for people that are continually out of compliance?
Or escalating the fines for people that are continually, which I think...
That they're not paying any way?
Yeah, well, yeah, they're poking holes and everything, but that's how it is. I mean, there's always a way through it for people, because a lot of times, the people that aren't mowing, because they don't have enough money to mow, and then we're hitting them up with $300 bills, and they're never going to pay. But I do think that, you know, you're, Dexter knows the properties, and we just need to do as good a job as we can of making sure that that notification starts right away, and it'd be really nice if Randy would step up and just maintain it so we didn't have to, and that's...
Well, that's the same conversation we had three years ago.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, I don't have any more tools in the toolbox than the ones we had three years ago. It's a, you know, the state drives it, and people's property, I mean, that's one reason we try to clean up the town, so people will learn that we want the town clean, and, because there's a lot of people that have a lot of property that don't give a crap, and they're not, and they're like, I don't want to clean up the town, and I'm like, but your neighbor wants it clean. And so I don't know how to have all those conversations and have them be effective, but we need, if we need to look at the ordinance on repeat offenders and more fines that we probably are never going to collect, we will, but, I mean, somehow, we need people to just step up and do what they need to be doing, and I, you're exactly right. I mean, I wish you didn't have to come in every two months, Brian, during growing season and say the same thing over and over, because I don't have an answer for the zoning. It just doesn't exist.
Just want to make it aware every now and then, so.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here for public opinion time?
My name's Carl Wood. I'm the county commissioner in the third district, which is out around the hospital. We got this silverback development that's going to go in. I'm here to talk to you about the drainage. Has there been anything considered at all when it leaves the city and comes to the county? Who's going to control that water? I was talking to, I wasn't my develop, not my developer, my engineer was talking to Janelle Phillips. She's with the Kansas Department Agriculture and Water Resource. She says the first thing needs to be done is for the developer to give to Pittsburgh a drainage report, and I'm here to ask yous, do you have one? Do you have a drainage report from your developer on this? Do you?
Pete's our engineer for the developer. Pete, can you, I don't know what, if there's another name for a drainage report or what we've got. Can you clarify?
Basically, we, the drainage report is done and submitted to Division of Water Resources, and that's why we got the box approved, which is already approved by DWR. So the Division of Water Resources does have a drainage study, and they have approved the box going in already.
Who was you talking to up there?
One of my engineers, because I really don't know, Carl.
Okay, okay. We need to find out, because I'll tell you what. I'm, I've talked to a lot of people, and I'm no engineer, but what I'm saying is, we need retaining ponds to catch that water and let it off. I know you want to do it after the first phase.
No, I, but, there's more to it than that.
Invite me.
Part of it is the city ordinances, and that the city...
Well, we're talking about the county. I don't care what happens in the city, because we got a medical complex that wants to go out there, and if we get a two or three inch rain, he's already in a floodplain at the end of it. We're going to get more. We just got them building a million-dollar bridge, and then I got them houses for a mile and a half. Then they come down, I already got a problem over there that goes in Brock's Farm because of Route Street, but we got that under control. That ends up over in there. Who are they going to come after? They're not going to come after the city. They're going to come after me for a short period of time. So I feel there needs to be a study, and I'm no engineer, because my engineer couldn't be here tonight, but we need retaining ponds in there. I don't know how big, I don't know where, because I'm no engineer. I'm just a mouthpiece. So I'm just asking. I don't want to get in an argument with you, but I will get in an argument.
You don't have to get in an argument. The fact is, a developer follows the rules and regulations of the city, and that's how we create the development. And the rules and regulations of the city require a storm drainage system, which are putting in a storm drainage system, but it does not require a pond or any kind of retention if the coefficient of runoff is less than .5.
Now, who done that study?
That's not a study. That's a city, that's in the city planning.
Okay, okay.
Regulation.
Okay.
And that's what a developer's going to go by. I don't disagree with you, but I'm telling you what a developer's going to go by is what are the city regulations today? And that's what a developer goes by. A developer goes by, as you all know, dollars, and he's not against doing stuff. We're talking about doing a pond off-site as far as Phase Two and Three, but as far as the city, current planning regs do not require him to have a detention pond, because his runoff coefficient on these housing is less than .5.
Okay, can I ask you this? I heard, and I am in by there, when they build the community health, they put a retaining pond on the other side of Michigan Street. Is that true or not? Or you don't know?
I don't know. I wasn't involved.
Yes, that's true.
That's true? So what's the difference in that and coming over in my property, on my people?
Residential and commercial.
Well, I still disagree, and I talked to the other commissioners, I talked to county council, and if something happens, someone's going to pay. Whether it's now, either take care of the problem, because I've heard, I can say again, I'm no engineer, I heard that this should be done before one stick of wood goes in. Now, if that's, if they don't play ball, I'll go, I'll go to the peak myself, because me personally, I had to go to the Attorney General on my own property, because someone was backing water up on me.
I understand that.
You know how I cleared it? I went in there night at the backhoe and took the dam down. And don't see, if not, we come in there. But no, it's not right.
Don't, don't...
No, I'm not threatening, I'm just telling you what could happen.
I think, this, yeah, this conversation seems to...
Okay. But I just want to let you know that you need to do something.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public input?
Bill Strengton, I live at 1515 Hampton. And before I start, I was here, like, two weeks ago when I was here, I asked questions about stormwater, and Matt was supposed to get with me. I did talk with him yesterday, and I haven't seen anything in writing, but pretty much answered my questions that absolutely nothing was done prior to my asking. The NOI stuff has been put on the website for the building permit since that time, and he said, well, we're putting this in, we're going to work on this, we're doing this. We asked for a copy of the inspection reports from, for 2017 and currently to 2018. He called me and said, Bill, I'm going to be honest with you, the only one you're going to get is the one we just did, because we have never done one formally with a checklist. And so he said he downloaded it, and they've done it, and he said, I got a copy of it, I requested, but nothing had been formally done before that. He said, we just talked face to face, and some of the other stuff. If you really want to look, look at the report, and I got a copy of 2016 and 17. Go look at the report that the city sends in to MS, the MS4S every year, and look under stormwater, and there are eight categories there, and they're all checked yes. And go look and see what, and I don't want somebody else answering the questions, I'd like for the mayor and the city council to actually do it, and not trust what they're telling you, and see what they say they have done, and then just you ask for copies of it, and see what you actually get. But the storm, the wastewater part of it, which is really Matt's deal under his signature, looks fantastic. It's the stormwater that has been just put off to the site. So I want to compliment my, Matt on this wastewater portion of it. Stormwater is still lacking. And I thought it was interesting, you're worried about the three things that property owners and taking care of their property, but you're not worried about stormwater. I thought that was pretty interesting as to what you just said on that. But the other, I got some questions on Silverback and on your agenda stuff tonight, and one is, who is paying to install the water main from Centennial all the way to the property line at Forcent, Silverback? Who's paying to install the sanitary sewer under East Cow Creek? Because that's going to be expensive. That's got to be bored. That's going to be pretty expensive. You know, in the paperwork tonight, it says the city's selling the property for $100,000. Is that just Phase One, or is that the whole 58 acres? Nowhere can you tell on any of this. Then the other thing is, if you look at your webpage called Attractive Incentive for Housing, Attractive Incentive for Housing Developers, have you ever looked at that page? Because one of the items is pretty good here, says, "Provide land at little or no cost. Donate engineering and other resources." But the third one is the one that really, I think, hits this project. Fast-track the removal of bureaucracy obstacles. We said something the other, on July 10th, when we were going to approve the Platts, that they were approved under the wrong article. The question was asked to the city engineer and building official about that. They said, oh, we reviewed it under Article 103, 104. Well, they approved it under Article 2, 105. Well, we asked through the Freedom of Public Information for the copy of the checklist that they used. We got an email back from the city, there is no checklist. So we asked for the notes that they used to do the review, and guess what we got? There are no notes for the review. So that would kind of indicate there's probably been no review, because actually, the very first paragraph of the subdivision says, if a developer wants to build something, he must set up a meeting with the building official for a pre-preliminary plat review, and them notes must be passed on to the planning commission. And zoning. Guess what? There's no notes. So is that one of the obstacles? Don't worry about what you're turning in? We're going to pass it anyhow? And then, tonight, you're going to vote on the loan application. If you've got your agenda in front of you, I'd like for you to open it up and go to Page 125, if that's not too difficult for you, and look at Part Five, Number Four. Is this prospective location properly zoned? And it says, yes. And then in parentheses, "Contact Darren Hall for additional information." And then look at the date on this application, and it was May 31st. You didn't zone it till July 10th. So does that mean this loan application is going for R1A zoning instead of 1RB? Is that what you're going to approve? Or does this have to be redone? It also says three years in here in this loan application, and in the memorandum that's attached to it, it now says, "For five years at 3% interest. Development will pay interest for the first three years. The principal reduction to occur in years four and five." But that's not what the loan application says. So I mean, do you guys actually really read this stuff, or do you just go by what they tell you is right without even having any idea? We elected you guys, and you're the mayor, you're the head guy, you're the one that signs all this stuff. You most definitely should know what you're signing. The Platts are still not correct, but you approved them. So I don't know how you're going to answer that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public input?
My name's Keith Kloster. I live at 1509 Bickner Place in Pittsburgh, Kansas. I'm here about the Silverback addition. I have a question for the board. Have you ever heard of the Kennedy Group Realty?
I hadn't till I had a few calls on it a couple of days ago.
Has anybody else heard of it? Okay, okay. And then on the Phase One on the building, originally it said there was going to be 52 houses, now is it 60? That's what I think you're voting on. That's what I think you're voting on tonight, or a part of that. Do you know which one it is? Is it the 52 or 60? Do you guys know?
I'm not on the board, yeah.
I mean, do you know? I mean, I've been asking you, yeah, sure.
60.
You're voting for 60, so you guys changed it from 52 to 60? Okay, they did. So, you guys didn't know, right?
I thought it was a 50-some originally, did that change?
Yeah, it's 60.
So, who runs this? I mean, do you just tell them what to do? I mean, I just wanted to know, I don't know how, how it works. I've just been just curious. Okay, and then, what money is the developer putting into this project out of his own pocket? Do we know?
Primarily the developer that's putting money into it, yes.
Through a loan? So...
The loan is part of it.
Okay, loan from...
Document.
Loans from the city?
Most of the funding is coming from Arvis Bank, and then, yes, we will, we are...
And the Arvis Bank is putting up the money for him, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then you guys are carrying the $450,000?
That's what is on the agenda tonight to approve, yes.
Okay. And then, do you guys know how long it will be before the city actually sees a dime of tax money off of the Silverback addition?
Once the properties are built.
How would we know that tonight?
Oh, I'm just, I'm just curious, I'm just asking you. I mean, because the way, ways, things that I have seen is we've got a $1.5 million road, possibly a $1.7 million road going in, which is what? 3.2 million that the city is paying for? And if you've looked what the...
Can I correct you?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Work off the facts. There's a $1.5 million road.
250 is a college, I'm sorry, okay.
So, it's down to $1,250,000.
Okay.
The $1.7 million road, what are you referring to?
Okay, isn't that for the Hampton Road and the Bittner? Because they got to move all the poles, they got to move all the lines, they got to move everything through there.
That's all on the developer.
The developer is paying for that?
Yes.
Okay, and we got that now, okay, perfect. And...
Back to the question, do you want me to answer the question about how soon we'll see tax money?
Yeah.
I believe the first 60 are in a phased RID project, so it's probably seven years or, depending on how fast it builds out, we would get property tax after all of his infrastructure costs are paid, which is the whole point of the RID. We don't have to front the money, which is, quite frankly, and to continue, most of the incentives that the city does are property tax. That's one thing we have to incent. We don't have a pile of cash to give developers upfront or anybody else. We give property tax abatement for hotels, we give property tax abatement for developers in this case, so we don't have to front the money. Property tax is a great reason to have homes. For us, the most important reason to have homes is to keep people in our communities so they will shop and live here, because with the amount of people that leave our community every day at 5:00 after working here, it has an effect. So, it's a great point. Property tax in most communities is why you build homes when you play Monopoly, that's why you have them. We're willing to defer that to get some houses built in this community, which is back to why we have incentives for free land, for shared engineering, because if you haven't noticed, there hasn't been a lot of developments built in Pittsburgh in the last 25 years. And when you're trying to attract people, you have to put things out there. So, a lot of the rural communities in Kansas give away free land. We're not giving away free land, we're selling land. We're always happy to do engineering studies in concert with people, whether it's for looking at a building and its structural integrity or looking at designing a complex that we could possibly have housing on, so, sorry to take...
Okay, like, like you said to me, okay, back to the original question. Okay, you said seven years, okay? How many years, how many tax years does he get to pay off an infrastructure with what he's going through? Do you know?
Seven years.
No, it's 15 years, is it? You say he's going for the...
No, you're incorrect.
Okay, once again...
Phase One.
Phase One, and he's going, he, okay, and that's with the moderate housing, right? Is the way that reads? Up to 1,200 to 3,000 square feet, is that right? Because you've always said that it was high-end housing, right? That we need.
Say that.
You're on the record of saying that.
Just now?
No, you, past meetings, that's all you've ever said about this, for high-end. Anyway, I've got questions for the board.
I'm simply describing his, his development. If he's saying it's high-end housing, then it's high-end housing.
Darren, did you say Phase One takes seven years to build these 60 houses? And after they're built, we're going to get property tax on them houses?
No, I believe seven years is the payback. And Garth, if you want to get up here, I mean, we've got an expert on the RID. I'm not the expert on the RID, I'm sure Garth can answer all your questions about payback and property taxes. Please.
Hi, my name's Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell. And on, on this specific RID, it's no longer than 15 years, so...
So, it's up to 15 years?
Up to 15, but if it pays off...
So, it's not seven?
If it pays off faster, though, then it will end faster.
How often does it pay off fa- faster? How often does it pay off faster?
It just, it just depends on the size of the project and how quickly the phases go in. Because it's all, it's all based on the increment of the tax on the assessed valuation as it increases, so...
So, on an average home of about $250,000, there's $2,900 a year paid in taxes in Pittsburgh. Okay, the project is 2.5 million, we're doing 60 ha, 60 houses, how long is that going to take? I mean, if they're $250,000, and part of that goes to the federal, so it's not all of that tax money that goes to that. Plus, we got to pay back that people who pay taxes now in this city for the roads that we're paying to put in. I'm just, I mean, and I, and I, like I said, I don't know anything about this. I just lived there, and I know my tax money's going to this. And it looks like to me it's going to be 25 years, maybe, before when, if Mickey ever finishes or whatever the development company name is, that we even get any tax money out of this situation.
Would you rather we front a million and a half, is that...
Well, we're kind of doing that, aren't we, building the roads and stuff?
No, building a road on public property that will remain on public property.
Okay, and that's scary now that you said that he is building the road by my house. Because all the studies I've done up in, in Kansas City of the things that he's done towards other things are just terrible, which none of you looked into, thank you. But, I mean, obviously you did, but you talked to other people, and that's it. Okay.
Noted.
Well, thank you, okay.
Thanks, Garth.
Is there anyone else here for public input?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Brooks, I live at 1533 Hampton Road. My only question I have is, when does the city of Pittsburgh or the developer of Silverback Landing plan on discussing the problem on the north end? I gave you guys some copies here of what I'm talking about. The Phase One street, which is Al Dorelani Way, butts up directly to my property. And I'm concerned about it, because I've talked to Matt Bacon, he knows that there's a problem. He's discussed it with the engineer. And I just was curious, because every house from west, east, down Hampton Road until it hits our west property line, all has an easement. But there is no easement once you hit my property. And I just wondered, because the road actually butts right into my property where there's no easement. So, my question was, how is this possible? And has anybody, no one's contacted us about discussing that, or, I'm just concerned about it.
Please, yeah?
As part of the original plat that was approved, there's a 30-foot right-of-way that's dedicated as part of the Silverback way development. The property line there, I believe, ends about 20 feet into the 60-foot right-of-way that heads up to the north. There's going to be about 50 feet, even if we don't go and try and extend any into that buffer zone, the landscape buffer zone that's also applied as part of the Silverback. So, there's 50-foot worth of right-of-way that we cannot hit the property line.
I understand, and like, I know you've probably seen this, but the way it looks, I know they have a right-of-way to their property to the south of us through here. And then, it comes clear across the road this way, and where everybody else is, is on the south side. So, that's what you're talking about?
Right, because the parcels go about to here, that's the right-of-way, it overlaps, they're trying to make that curve.
Okay. Well, I knew that there was a problem, but I just didn't, no one's called to talk to us about it, and I was just concerned, and I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Is that, is that satisfac, I mean, is that answer? I didn't see what he was drawing, but hopefully that's satisfactory. Thanks, Cameron.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public input?
I'm Jan Aly, live at 1521 Hampton Road. And this is just kind of going with what Keith Kloster was talking about, the Kennedy Group. It was brought to our attention, and Tammy, would you hand these? If you look on their webpage, has Mick Venna that really looks like Richard Greer and Annie Kennedy that looks like Joanna Collins, or Joanna Gaines. That's their website. I don't know if it's an error. If it's an error, I hope they can correct it. If it's not an error, I, you know, it puts a doubt in us about the developer. And are they looking at their, their website? And are they, I'm sure somebody else does their website for them. But it, it causes concern for all of us.
That, or maybe he has a really good photographer.
He must have. It'd be nice if Richard Greer and Joanna Gaines was here.
I better hire him. Thank you, Jane.
So, help, help me understand where the Kennedy Group fits into this. Because that's not who's in the documents. It's P and L Development is who we're, we're contracting maybe tonight with. So, where's this Kennedy Group come up? Is there a commissioner? Have you heard of that before?
I've seen another one of Mickey's websites when we first met him a couple of years ago. And I'm not sure he had Richard Greer on there, but he had something much prettier than his current self. So, I don't know if that's just, I mean, it's a, I don't know. I don't know who the Kennedy Group is, but I know he's done that before, so maybe that's, you know...
Somebody told me about the URL. I've got people sending me information all the time, and they said, "Look at this." If you look at the, their website, they manage, it looks like Mickey's properties, because one of the links on top of it is Silverback Landing. And if you click on it, it says, "Coming Soon." So, that looks like their management company, he uses to manage his developments.
So, it's his management company? I still think that's Richard Greer and...
Well, it is.
It's definitely Richard Greer.
And Annie Kennedy, and I doubt they work for his management company.
Is there anyone else here for public input? All right, if not, we'll close public input and move into the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Item D.
Item B is in...
D.
D. Item D is in dog, are there any other items to be removed? If not, we will proceed to, well, can I have a...
So, move.
Minus item D. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda minus item D. Roll call vote?
Chenoweth? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
McNay?
Aye.
Munsell?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D. Approval of ordinance number S-1053 levying a special assessment against lots or parcels of land on which a public nuisance was located to pay the cost of abating the nuisance and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance on behalf of the city. Chuck, what were your questions?
Well, my question was, this new ordinance replaces ordinance number S-1045. What's the difference in between that ordinance and this new ordinance, Cameron?
This is an annual ordinance, so I don't know that it replaces, but it's in addition to, it's up to...
So, each year would have a different ordinance number?
Correct.
That's correct. Just a list of the properties for that year, so it's different than the year before.
But under this new ordinance, and I think we have it under this ordinance, about after 30 days to bring the property up to code or demolish it, the city can go ahead and do that, and then we put it on their taxes.
I don't think that's a change from the previous ordinance, is it?
No.
Well, the, the new ones got, unless it's a safety issue, and I didn't see that in the old ordinance, so if there was a safety issue, the city could go to 30 days and go ahead and take care of the safety issue of said property.
Correct.
So, I guess my question is, why wasn't, we couldn't use that ordinance on the property on Fifth Street to go ahead and abate the safety issue and put that cost on the property owner's taxes?
I think Darren probably lead a little bit better into it, but if we looked at taking that route, the city would not be able to take possession of that property at that point in time. You're leaving it on the property, and it would most likely sit vacant till the next tax sale. And the next, and I believe it takes, what, three or five years for it to be delinquent on taxes before it goes to a tax sale. So, you'd be looking at having that property vacant for probably seven, 10 years, given the status of the, kind of these tax sales.
So, that's why we did the, took ownership over the property.
Right, because otherwise it could have sat there for seven, 10 years, never collected a dime, and just been an eyesore, or an empty spot in the downtown.
While the block still would have been closed off.
Yeah, it was a safety issue.
Well, even if we'd gone ahead and demoed it and assessed that against the property, you'd have had that assessment against the property for that entire time.
So, you would not be developing it in the meantime?
Right.
Right, right.
So, going back on the Valala property, so this ordinance wouldn't pertain to, if there was a safety issue on his property, that we could go ahead and have him clean that up?
Well, if there's an imminent danger to health and safety, I say we've done that on a couple of garages, secondary structures, not very often on primary structure. Normally, we're able to get to it before it gets to that point in time. For example, the, what happened on Fifth Street, that was something that just, you know, came out of the blue there. Just that wall decided it was time to move, and it became unsafe at that point. And there's no indication before that, that it was at imminent or potentially imminent collapse.
So, there was a engineering firm that looked at that and said that we need to do something immediately?
Right, yeah, it needed to come down. Well, prior to that, we're trying to work the property owner to get it taken down. And when that moved, it became a life safety issue, and we went ahead and moved forth a demo.
So, we could have done it, but we wouldn't, it would have just sat there vacant without...
Right, if we had put the assessment on the property, it would have sat there until the assessment was paid for vacant property for that size of assessment. My estimation, it would have sat there vacant until the assessment was either forgiven or it went to tax sale, and you get pennies on the dollar at best. And vacant land for seven to 10 years.
All right, thank you. Under, for the question, I move to approve.
Okay, Cameron.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Public hearing. Proposed 2019 budget. The city of Pittsburgh advertised for a public hearing to be held on August 14th, 2018, at the city commission meeting, commencing at 5:30 PM in the commission room, located in the law enforcement center, 201 North Pine, for the purpose of hearing and answering questions relating to the proposed 2019 budget. Jamie?
Mayor, city commissioners, I advertised first Kansas statute in the Morning Sun for a public hearing to be held on August 14th. To hear from any citizens, I'm asking you to open a public hearing up for the 2019 proposed budget. And if there's none, then close the public hearing and have you guys vote to approve the 2019 budget as proposed. And sign the document before you all leave tonight.
Rather important.
Yeah.
Sure. All right, well, at this point, we will open the hearing. So, if anyone has any comments, concerns, questions regarding the proposed 2019 budget that we'll be voting on here shortly, you're free to come up and voice them now. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and commence to voting. Is there a motion regarding the 2019 proposed budget?
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Don't forget to sign the certificate.
We'll sign the certificate.
Good job, Jane.
Due diligence, I appreciate it. Special presentations. Economic Development Quarterly Report. Director of Economic Development Blake Benson and Pittsburgh State University Chief Strategy Officer Sean Nakarado will present the Quarterly Economic Development Report.
Which do you have, password? Going to share with everybody watching on TV what the city's password is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, we will be brief, we know you have a lengthy agenda. This is an opportunity for Sean Nakarado and myself to update you on our economic development activities per the, the contract that the city has with both of our organizations.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I'll echo that. Appreciate you all taking the time this evening earlier... Appreciate you all taking the time this evening, earlier before the meeting, to tour Block Twenty-two, which I think is a, a great manifestation of the success that we're having in this team approach to economic development. I'm trying to tap dance here as long as I can. Stall, all right. So, but very excited, you know, one of the things we heard as we walked through there time and time again is this doesn't seem like Pittsburgh. But one of the things that I think Blake and I work every day for is that hopefully someday nobody says that anymore, because it is Pittsburgh.
Absolutely. So as you see there, we've conducted twenty-three business retention and expansion visits so far this year. Of those, we've produced three active expansion leads. I feel very good that we'll be bringing you a recommendation on one of those very soon, and the, the other two, hopefully by the end of the year. That's a, that's a great program, visiting our local manufacturers, and not only discussing the challenges they're having, but also looking at growth opportunities as well. You want to kind of bounce?
In addition, if you look down at the red, we're going to bounce back and forth here a little bit. Working with Blake, we've submitted five proposals to the Kansas Department of Commerce this, this, to date this year for attraction. So that activity is going up.
And, and we're with those proposals. We lost all of them because we didn't have a, really a building big enough or that fit their specs. Wasn't anything about the community, it was available inventory of existing buildings, which is something we're seeing more and more. Also, making a lot of contacts with owners of dilapidated structures. As the city talks about, the city's role in helping to rehab those, we're reaching out to the owners to let them know that anything that the city can do to, especially if it's a vacant property, to get that back into use is something that we're trying to be very proactive in reaching out to those property owners.
And that's something that definitely impacts and supports our business attraction efforts, as Blake said, because that can help us to find spaces, or, or better spaces for buildings to, to be placed. As far as new businesses, three new restaurants, of course, have signed now in Block Twenty-two. We know that that's going to be the, I guess you could say, the third phase, and we probably won't see those open until at least October. But we're very excited that we're going to have three brand-new restaurant concepts right there at the corner of Fourth and Broadway.
Yeah. And the, the city partners with the Kansas Department of Commerce on a program called Economic Gardening. I believe Commissioner Chenoweth came to our, our last informational meeting. We'll have another one of those on August twenty-second. That's a program for businesses that are in their second stage of growth. So they're past being a startup, but they're not a fully mature company. That Economic Gardening program can provide them up to forty hours of, of business expertise. It's, it's scary when a company is thinking about going from the first stage to the second stage. And thanks to the, the agreement with the city of Pittsburgh and the Kansas Department of Commerce, basically, we split the cost, so any local business that makes the, the application can go through the Economic Gardening program free of charge. So next lunch meeting will be on August twenty-second, which is a Wednesday at City Hall, and if anybody is interested, I'd be happy to visit with them about it.
The Economic Gardening work that Blake is doing, and also the business retention and expansion visits dovetail very well into work that we're doing together. I'm skipping one here to talk a little bit about the forty-seven businesses and thirteen, including thirteen startups that we're working with through the Small Business Center at Enterprise PSU. It's something that, in the business lifecycle approach that we're taking, in the team approach, if Blake is going out and doing a business retention and expansion visit, he can help to identify ways that we might be able to help those businesses. And as you see with those kind of statistics, it's the number of two hundred and thirty-five consulting hours right here in Pittsburgh just this year from our team. We're very excited about that.
And Deja Clark in Sean's office does a great job of, of business counseling, so appreciate what she does. We also assisted Crawford County Commissioner Jeff Murphy in doing, putting on an economic summit. I believe a number of you were there. That not only helped inform local residents on what's going on in terms of economic development, it really helped our surrounding communities, you know. Here in Pittsburgh, we're very fortunate, have a very defined incentive schedule and policy, and some of the smaller communities in the county don't necessarily have that expertise. So this brought all of the economic development programs that are offered throughout the county, but also gave Arma and Gerard and some surrounding communities, maybe some programs that they could implement in their communities on a, a smaller scale. So I think that was a, a good example of Pittsburgh being a good neighbor and, and trying to help grow the entire county in addition to Pittsburgh. So glad that we were able to play a role in that.
And I'll hit the last couple here. One that I skipped over, we're very excited, we got an award from the Economic Development Agency, the federal government award, to support our tech, standing up a technology transfer program at Pittsburgh State. That's going to be very helpful in, in working between the Kansas, Kansas Technology Center, the Kansas Palmer Research Center, and working on innovations that can lead to small businesses to, and startups here in Pittsburgh, if not existing businesses, that we can do that transfer. The last couple there really touch on the amount of promotion that we're really trying to work on, from the university's standpoint, on not just selling Pittsburgh State, but selling Pittsburgh. The truth is, is that if we're going to get students to come here or stay here, they've got to love Pittsburgh, not just Pittsburgh State. And so, for instance, this, this magazine that will go out this, here shortly, if it hasn't gone out yet, to fifty-five thousand of our alumni, is going to include a, a full-page ad talking about what's going on great in Pittsburgh right now, that we placed in there. And, and lastly, you see there, the kind of things that we're able to do with our alumni. The Annual National Plastics Expo that Darrell Pulliam, as well as Dean Tim Dossi and others from the Kansas Technology Center attended, hosted over, had over a hundred alumni and industry contacts while they were there, because obviously, we produce a ton of great plastics professionals, and we want to build an atmosphere where they don't have to go somewhere else. So connecting with them and telling them it's, it's a great time to come home is the kind of thing that we were doing there.
Absolutely. So this is really just a snapshot, as you know, and you, you see in, in your reports, there's a lot of activity on a, a weekly basis, but we just kind of picked out a, a few things that you might be interested in. So a lot of activity going on in terms of economic development, great synergy between the, the city, the university, and the chamber. But with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Blake, how many dilapidated building visits have you made? I mean, what's the...
The, the twenty-two. Most of those I had already visited at some point, because this is a, a multi-year effort that we've been making. A couple of those properties have changed ownership, so I'm, I'm hopeful that you're going to see some development occurring on them. But as much as anything else, it's maintaining contact with the property owners. Some don't have any, don't have any plans to, to develop it immediately, but some, since the last time we spoke with them, realize the economy is, is in a good place now, and they're, they're ready to move forward with some plans.
Do you have a feel for how many of those have absentee owners or landlords? I mean, that don't live here?
Um, I would say, I probably shouldn't venture a guess, but it's probably half and half.
Okay.
And, and sometimes, you know, even with the, the city's records, I mean, we, we have to do a lot of digging to find an out-of-town owner, especially if it's under a, you know, LLC that's not their name. Those are obviously the more difficult ones, but I would say it's probably half and half.
Sean, you talked about the three businesses that you got lined up to come in, I guess on the crow's side.
Yes, correct.
What are their business hours? Do you have any idea? Is it during the day, night, afternoon?
Yes, all of the above. Three different entities. Toast, which is a, a local entrepreneur, Heather and Roger Horton, who of course owns Sweet Designs Cakery, are, are going to open a new restaurant, Toast. I think it's going to be open for, primarily for lunch and dinner, but I think that certain days, they'll be open for brunch or, or breakfast. We have the burrito concept, that the name has not yet been, I guess, announced or determined by the, those folks. That'll be somewhat similar to Chipotle, and that'll have, I think, from probably lunch through maybe late night hours. And then finally, Brick and Mortar, which is a larger-scale concept, three thousand square feet. I guess you might call it upscale bar and grill, for lack of a, of a better term. And it'll be open for most, I think during the week, it's going to be open, lunch, dinner through late night, and then on weekends, that'll be open for brunch on Saturdays and Sundays.
So I guess what my question would be, what about parking? Where are they going to park? All these restaurant customers, employees?
The employees?
And the customers. Where will they park?
Well, you know, I, I, I think that's a very good question, I understand where it comes from. I think that, right now, it's, I, I mean, personally, anytime I've been down there, I never have a hard time finding a place to park. Sometimes you have to be willing to walk a block or two. I guess I would say that we would definitely be willing to work with the city on addressing a problem if it is ever to arise.
So I understand walking a block or two, but what if it's raining and snowing and ice and sleet? Do you think people's going to walk a block or two to find a parking spot?
Um, well, I mean, Commissioner, they, they do at the university. I, I will say, they have to walk sometimes a block or two from the parking lot. I also would think that in cities that are larger, such as Kansas City and others, that, that remain busy even in inclement weather. You know, I, I can't really, I'm far from weather forecaster, and I'm definitely not a parking expert either, but I think we'll just have to see how it goes. I, I would say that we're not the first city to deal with growing a downtown. And cities have done it, and they have done it over and over again, have been successful. And I think that, as I said to start with, we're more than, more than happy to, if a problem does arise, we will work with, with the city. I also would say, you know, these folks are, are not novices, these business owners that we're talking about. And when they're looking at their projections, and they're looking at the space, and they looked at the parking, they're willing to make a substantial investment in it based on their projections. And those, they, you know, they're from Santa Monica, California, where I guarantee they probably have a bigger parking problem than we're going to have for a while at least. And I think they made the decision that they could still make money. So...
But what do you mean by working with the city on parking for these businesses?
Well, just as we've worked, well, just as we've worked with the city to, for, for right now, to this point, with the parking plan, with the five, the five different lots, that was something we worked with, with Darren and his team on, and, and in fact, even made accommodations and changes based on new information as we moved along. I think everybody knows that initially, we thought it was going to be four lots, then as we further studied it, we heard more information, we moved five into a better, I think, plan that is responsive. I think just like that, I guess is what I'm saying, Commissioner. I, I can't, I can't tell the future, but I will, the only thing I can say about the future is whatever the situation is, we're going to be willing to work with the city on this. And I don't know what those problems or answers are going to be at this point, but as I said, just like we worked with the city on this, this plan, we would work with them again.
Well, I know, the reason I bring it up, and you know why I do, because there's current businesses that have the same concerns about parking for their business, that wasn't involved with the college and the city of working parking concerns. They did assessment, study, I guess you'd say a study, and come to find out, none of the business was contacted. So, you know, the new businesses, I feel like will be competing with parking with the existing business. And sooner or later, there's not going to be any parking. So I don't know how we're going to work that out, but, you know, we have businesses that have been in town here for seventy years, and I just want to make sure that the new businesses, when we work with the city, are not giving an incentive to be, come to town because there's going to be parking, because they're going to have to compete. And I thought any business that comes to that area has to come up with a plan on their own for their parking issues. I didn't know if something in the college had to work out with the city or the business that you're going to have in your college-owned property will have to come up with a plan for their own parking.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I would say that insofar as those, those existing businesses that you're talking about were not contacted, and insofar as they weren't contacted by our project that we did, then I would say that was an oversight. I can't, frankly, I mean, I was not involved in all of those conversations. We definitely tried to include graduate students in that project, because we wanted to have as a way to, to, to help defray costs, as well as to give experience. If, if those, insofar as the business were not contacted, that was an oversight.
I understand that.
We corrected.
Unfortunately, it, it wasn't a good plan if they weren't contacted. So I guess in the future, with these new businesses, if you work with the city on parking, that you include the businesses that wasn't included with the parking study, and also listen to what their needs for parking is.
Will do.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
No. Great job, guys. Give up the good work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Department report. Fire department. Fire chief Mike Simons will provide an update on activities within his department.
Hello, good evening, mayor, commissioners. Bear with me a minute while we change shows here. I was hoping Blake would help me out with that, but... Just kidding. No, I'm just kidding, I just thought, yeah. Did fine. Again, good evening. I wanted to spend a few moments, and there's so much stuff that, that I could cover with the fire department, and obviously, we don't have time for that. But, so what I thought I would do, since there's several of you that are somewhat new, is that we would look at just an overview of how we operate, and some good things that have happened with us, and some good resources that we've acquired, and a lot of them free of, of charge to the city and into our community, which is always a good thing. As far as the general overview, we're very much like the police, as far as we are twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But we are different in some way of how we operate. We have three shifts. You can see this is the sample schedule, and we have three shifts that operate A, B, and C shift, and they work twenty-four-hour shifts. That's the difference between the police and the fire. We, our shift changes at seven in the morning, and then we're there until seven o'clock that, that next day. We basically work, in, in an annual year, we actually work about thirty percent more hours than a normal employee would. Normally, a normal employee with, with Monday through Friday would be about two thousand eighty hours. Our normal shifts put us to about twenty-nine twelve. So we are there a little bit longer, even though it looks, it looks different. We have eleven personnel per shift, and those eleven personnel, you have one, one battalion chief, two captains, two lieutenants, and six firefighters and drivers. Myself and my fire marshal, we are a little more traditionally there, Monday through Friday, we're salary exempt. We, we do respond to the fires in, in the evenings and things like that, or if it's a need, that we need to be there, we monitor those calls, and we obviously do respond. We obviously know we have three stations. Station one's on West Fourth Street. Station two is our oldest station, which is at Twentieth and Rouse, and then Station three is down Bicentennial on Rouse as well. They're centrally located, and that does a lot with our ISO rating, as far as being able to have a, a good response time, and we'll, we'll speak about that in just, just a little bit. Far as our call load breakdown, we are an all-hazard approach. That's the way we have to be anymore. Obviously, fire is going to be one of our main things. That, that picture there is actually Bitesingers Fire, if you remember that several years ago, tragic loss on that one, as far as a building. Obviously EMS, hazardous material, responses, accidents, any, any kind of auto accident could be injury or non-injury. A lot of technical rescue, which could be anything from confined space, trench rescue, and even, even water rescue. We do have wet, dry suits and equipment for that. We did just purchase a banana boat, which is that bottom picture. Not only is it, it's funny, it's called the banana boat, but not only is it good for water rescue, it is also good for ice. It's designed specifically to be able to venture out on an icy surface and, and be able to recover or rescue, hopefully rescue somebody. And then we also have an actual rescue boat as well. Basically, anything and everything is what, is what we do. If, if we get a call, we're either going to mitigate it locally, or if we need to, we're going to call for resources to do so. Just depends on the magnitude of the event. In the last twelve months, we've had twenty, about around twenty-three hundred calls, just a little bit under twenty-three hundred. Nine hundred and five of those have been EMS, which is about forty percent, which is a large percentage of our calls. But compared nationally, we are actually much better. They are easily over fifty percent, most departments, sometimes they approach sixty. We are, we lessen ours down because our dispatchers do a good job. We have a protocol, there are only certain calls that we're going to go on, and that would be like a chest pain, stroke, seizures, any kind of trauma. We have a set, a set of guidelines that our dispatchers look at, and so we're not necessarily going out there, I'm going to use the term loosely, a nosebleed per se. But we will. If the county's tied up, if the county requests us, we're never going to refuse a call, we're always, always going to go. Hundred and seventy-five fires in the last twelve, twelve months, and that could be anything from structure fires, to grass fires, dumpster fires, vehicle fires, any of those kind of fires.[1698.83] Uh, three hundred and forty, uh, investigations, um, which investigations can be, a lot of those are false alarms. We do get a lot of false alarms from the different businesses and, and, uh, from PSU and different facilities. Um, but also CO investigations would fall underneath that as well, uh, which we just did open up a new program, we're getting ready to, for free CO detectors, but about ninety-five vehicle accidents in the last twelve months. Um, some of those are injury, a lot of those are injury accidents, and some of them are, are non-injury accidents. Um, just depends on what the conditions are. Um, forty-one hazardous situations. A lot of those are natural gas leaks, if we end up with a ruptured line, something along those lines, or a fuel spill of some kind, um, that happens frequently. Three hundred and ninety-six public services. Uh, a lot, a lot of that's fire prevention, and a lot of that is teaching to the public. We do fire extinguisher demonstrations, um, we'll go out to the parks with the kids and those, all those types of activities to, to get involved with our, with our community. Two hundred and ninety-eight inspections in the last twelve months. Most, most of those are completed, um, by my fire marshal and/or myself. Um, though we have an MOU with the state fire marshal's office, so a lot of that's driven by that as far as what facilities that we're gonna inspect locally and send that data up to the fire marshal's office. Um, our, our officers do attend a lot of those inspections as well as far as our, our captains. We've had eleven rescues in the last year, and we'll talk a little bit more about what those rescues, uh, were or could be, I should be, should, should say. Um, quickly, Task Force Four, it's our search and rescue task force. It is a regional, um, task force, and it's also a state task force. There are seven of them throughout the state. Um, we are number four, which takes in about the southeast twelve counties of, of, where, of, of the state. Um, we have three caches of equipment. We have some in Pittsburgh, they have some in Parsons, they have some in Chanute. We've got about fifty members, um, and they basically all group together and form Task Force Four. The, the nice thing about it, the big thing about it, is that, this is what you're seeing in the images, is Rescue Forty-two in our trailer. Um, and it's full of equipment, everything from ropes, high-angle rescue, uh, hazmat equipment, paratech shoring equipment, um, search cameras, GPS, lighting. We basically even have our own radio repeaters and antennas. When we go into these events, a lot of times we lose cell service, you lose your towers. And so we now have the capability to actually self-deploy these in the field. Um, we are designed to be basically self-supported for up to seventy-two hours, including food and water, because when you get into a lot of these events, you do not have access to a lot of those items. All of that is funded through Homeland Security, one hundred percent. In Pittsburgh alone, we've, we've received over four hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment with the primer and, and, and the, uh, and the equipment that's inside of them. It's just phenomenal. Like I said, that's one hundred percent. Now, we can be deployed from the state for our marshal's office, but we also can refuse that. We're never gonna put ourselves at harm's way, uh, in order to, to do that. Um, some of the responses, we've actually been to Eureka, Kansas twice in the last year. Unfortunately, they were hit with a tornado twice. The second one, most recently, was a lot worse than the first one. Um, Baxter Springs, we also responded there. Obviously, Joplin, we spent a lot of time in Joplin. Um, and then we actually even sent a crew to Houston, Texas during the floods as well. We joined with the other task force and went down as Kansas Task Force One. Um, training on our task force, we primarily do at least one exercise a year. Um, that image that you see there, it's hard to see, we have a couple personnel, and there's actually a vehicle that was set up in Neotashay, Kansas. We had three locations of houses that were gonna be demolition. They literally came in with demoed cars, shoved them through the homes, and then imploded the home on them by placing dummies inside of them. So we physically had to go in and actually shore it. We did night ops, as you can see. Um, this was the closest I've ever been to actually looking at Joplin, Missouri again. It, it mimicked that so close. It was a phenomenal training. Problem is, that two-day training exercise has not come cheap. About thirty-five thousand dollars for that. Um, again, that is all paid through Homeland Security. Two more little items. Insurance Service Office, this is some good news for us. Um, the ISO, if you're not familiar with that, is an agency that basically rates fire departments on a scale and then gives that information to insurance underwriters. And they establish from that the insurance rates of our community, especially in our case, the, the commercial properties. Um, the rating basically goes from one to ten, one being the best fire service and ten being actually no fire protection, pretty much. In two thousand seventeen, um, we had an audit. Happens about every three to five years. In two thousand seventeen, we were audited, and we actually did end up with a, a, a rating change. Um, we actually were able to go to an ISO of two, um, from a three to a two. To put it in a little bit of perspective, um, the last change took, was thirty-two years ago. We went from an ISO of four to an ISO of three, so it is a major deal. If you look, uh, at the scale, and actually, I don't know why, there was another one that was Kansas that is now missing on that. But if you look at the ISO ratings of, of nationwide, out of forty-six, over forty-six thousand fire departments, we're in the top three percent of, of the nation. Uh, in Kansas, there's about eleven hundred fire departments, and we're in the top two percent. There's only twenty departments as of two thousand seventeen that were rated a one or two in the state of Kansas, and we are, we are fortunately enough to be one of those. I can't take all the credit, though. It was a very much a combined effort. Um, ten percent of the rating comes from, from emergency communication. That's our dispatch centers. That's, that is the money that we've put into, to increase our dispatchers, the equipment we've put in there, that helps that rating. Forty percent of it goes from water. Our utilities are phenomenal. Matt Bacon does a great job, his crews do a great job. We have an abundance of water. When we go through the region, you would not, you don't understand how fortunate we are with, with the amount of water that we have. And then fifty percent of the rating comes from the fire departments, which would be including our equipment, personnel, response times, and also training. And that'll get us on to the last point, is the public safety sales tax. Um, we had four initiatives. The first one was Engine One. Um, obviously, we got that new pumper. Um, and we got a great interest rate, two point five two percent. We're doing a ten-year, uh, purchase, finance the purchase on that one. Um, the second initiative was the SCBA's. We ended up with fifty-four new air packs and a hundred and eight bottles. We also were able to finance that for a very, very low interest rate as well. Uh, the bunker gear, basically head to toe, helmets, all of those items. Um, we're buying seven sets a year. Um, and it is, it has an end-of-life cycle of five years, so in set, in five years, we will have purchased five sets, or, or purchased a set for every firefighter, and then that process starts over again in year six, which will actually be next year, we'll start that process. Um, training is, is a huge component to the public safety sales tax. Um, to give you some perspective on the training, in the last twelve months, classes, as far as the number of classes combined that our fire department, our firemen have, have, have attended, they've attended one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine classes in the last twelve months. Combined number of train hours for our firefighters, we've, we've trained three thousand five hundred and fifty-four hours in the last twelve months. And I can assure you, it's probably more than that, because we don't document, document probably every little bit of training that we do, but we document most of it. So I apologize for the time and the amount of information, but I, if you've got any questions, I would gladly.
I got a couple, Mike. Did you say, and, uh, you probably did, but I missed it, how many firefighters do we have?
A total of thirty-five. Three shifts of eleven, and then there's myself, and then the fire marshal. So a total of thirty-five.
Are we full up at this present time?
Yes, we are. We just actually hired one about thirty days ago.
Have we lost firefighters recently to larger cities? And if so, I know we have. Why, why, why would you think that was the main driving force that we lose these? I think it's an asset. We have this city. I'm sure everybody in here does. We train these guys. Uh, they're very professional, and we wanna keep them here. W- why are they leaving?
Agreed. Um, you know, we have had some retirements too, but the ones that you're speaking of, we have lost, uh, three to larger departments i- in the last couple of years. Um, and unfortunately, they're in that five-to-seven-year range where we've really, you know, we've, we've put a lot of in, in, into, money and time into them. Um, it's difficult. I mean, first of all, we cannot compete against the pay of Olathe in Wichita. I mean, it is phenomenal. They're, they're going in there and making more than, or as much as, as my captains do. And, and that's, that's just difficult to battle. Um, some of them, obviously, were young, and, you know, when you've got over ten thousand calls a year in Olathe, that's extremely appealing to a young man, right? Um, to have that, that excitement. So that makes it difficult. So it, it is a battle for us, and it's one that I, I, I'm trying to monitor and watch very well. I, I think it could be done with a combination of things. Um, obviously, you know, we are actually looking at some, uh, some pay studies and just getting the baseline, see where we're at, actually, as, as far as cities that are comparable to our size. We, we need to know that information, good or bad, um, and so we'll work with HR to do that. Um, and then also, I think, I, I'm, I'm trying my best, I'm, I'm continually trying to do this, is to empower them to assist and help with these trainings. Um, for an example, the last new hire we did, we did it completely different than we've ever done it. I had the crews actually build a program, a written program, that came from them, that said, this is what we're gonna teach this guy in two weeks. And we, we kept him there twelve hours a day for two weeks in order to do that, and it worked phenomenal. But yet, they had buy-in. They had, they built it. I reviewed it, but they built it, and they did a wonderful job. So I think that will help, um, but we're looking at some different options, Chuck.
So that, that was another question I had about this wage study, and you, you're looking into that. Uh, all these specialties task forces, uh, and that's the voluntary basis, I take it? The guys that volunteer, is there any pay incentive for them, so maybe they can do some of this stuff and have a little bit, maybe possibly keep them here?
That is some conversations that I've, I've had, um, with staff concerning that, even, even, uh, I know on the PD side, there's some initiatives and some pay for degrees and, and different certifications. We have some of that on our lower end. Um, as far as firefighter one and two and EMT, there's some prices that are established for that and driver. Um, but we really need to probably, we're looking at trying to maybe expand that if possible, um, to where those, because structural collapse technician doesn't sound like much. It's a two-year track. It takes two years to get, because you're gonna get confined space, trench, rescue, structural collapse. It, it takes two years to basically get those certifications. It, it takes a lot of time. So yes, we are. I mean, that is part of what we're looking into.
And we need the training, and them guys should be compensated. Hopefully, like you said, you're looking into that, and maybe that might help them stay around the area a little longer.
Yes.
I can understand the excitement.
The advantage of public.
The younger guys wanting to go somewhere where they're more.
Yeah.
Uh, busy.
And, and one of the, one of the persons that left also had a baby, and there's family out west, so there's other, there's always other, other issues that come up with it. But that's the nice thing about the public safety sales tax, is now we are able to pay our guys to go train. That's an incentive, too. There is some, there is some, uh, some money there.
I feel like you guys have done a good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was all very cool to see.
Thank you. I, I, I give the credit to all my guys. They're the, they are the, the fighting force, and they keep me on my toes, which is a good thing, so. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Consider the following. Resolution number twelve oh six. Consider staff recommendation to adopt resolution number twelve oh six, determining that the city is considering establishing a rural housing incentive district within the city and adopting the plan for development of housing and public facilities in such proposed district, establishing the date and time of a public hearing on such a matter, and providing for the giving of notice of such public hearing, Silverback Landing, Phase One Rural Housing Incentive District, P and L Development LLC.
Commissioners, thank you. Um, so the, the resolution for, um, for Silverback is the, the piece of property is already an RHID-approved piece of property, so what this resolution is, 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 um, allowing this, this development to, to take part in, in that, uh, the, the incentive to, uh, create the infrastructure for the, the development. Um, I wanna answer a, a couple of questions that were during public input, though. Uh, the hundred thousand dollars for the piece of, of property is for the entire piece of property, not just Phase One. Uh, it's for the whole fifty-eight acres. Um, that's what that is. We, we do have a, a contract for that. Um, and then the, uh, the question of taxes, it's a maximum of fifteen years per phase. But, um, one thing that's, that's worth noting is the current assessed value, as, as it is, will always remain. Those taxes will always get paid during the project. Uh, the RHID is, is the increased tax amount due to the project. Um, and then, again, sixty single-family homes in Phase One, it is in this resolution. It is in the. Um, what I would like to do before we have any discussion about the resolution is, uh, bring Garth Herman up. He is, as, as Darren alluded to earlier, an expert with RHID process. And, um, just kinda have him maybe explain it, uh, uh, in detail to you all, so, so that you all better understand it, because it is something we're gonna continue to use in, in our community. And, um, and then have him also give us kind of an, an idea of where we are at currently in the process with Silverback in general.
Thank you, Quentin. Uh, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, as I mentioned earlier, Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, um, out of our Wichita, Kansas office. Appreciate you having me out here tonight. Um, as, as Quentin said, I'd, it'd probably be a good idea. I know the city's been working on this RHID process, uh, for a number of years, so just kind of stepping back to give a big picture of what that process is and kind of what the policy is behind that statute, and then kind of talk about specifically, uh, where the city's at right now and what are the steps forward. Um, I know this has also been a somewhat long meeting, so I'll go through this, um, probably a little bit quickly and from a high level. However, if there are any questions, or if you need any clarification or have any comments, please feel free to jump in, interrupt me, uh, and let me know, and we can, we can have a discussion as necessary. Um, kinda starting out, where this started at was about, um, about three years ago, back in twenty fifteen. The study, the city worked to put together a study called a Housing Needs Analysis in order to figure out what are the housing needs in the city of Pittsburgh, and what are some opportunities to help, uh, provide some incentives so that you can get some residential housing in the city. Um, as part of that analysis and as part of looking at the statutes, there's this, this statute called the Rural Housing Incentive District Program. And what it is, is it's a state law that allows cities and counties of certain sizes to provide incentives in a defined area to help encourage the construction and development of residential housing. And City of Pittsburgh fits perfectly within those guidelines. It has to be a city of less than sixty thousand people and a county of less than eighty thousand. That's what the statute defines as a, as a rural area. The city fits perfectly within that, and in order, um, for a city to take advantage of that, basically, you have to do this Housing Needs Analysis and basically make your case with the Kansas Department of Commerce. Back in twenty fifteen, the city did that. You got approval from the Department of Commerce back in twenty sixteen that the initial study met the requirements and that the city can move forward with putting together the rest of your how, uh, residential, your rural housing incentive district. Um, over the intervening couple of years, basically, the city staff has done a lot of work on this. They also brought, uh, brought me and my firm in, um, about middle of last year to kind of help out with this. Our firm has worked with other communities throughout the state to help get these programs up and running. So, um, city staff brought us in to kind of help out with this and to make sure that all the legal documents and all the processes is properly handled. How it works is, in essence, when the housing district is created, there's an assessed valuation that's associated with that ground before any construction or any development or anything else related to the project happens. And that assessed valuation is, in essence, set at that level. For the life of the RHID, the property taxes that are levied on that base assessment, those property taxes always flow to all of those same taxing jurisdictions that they always did before. So the property taxes that the city got, that the school district got, that the county got from that property, as it is right now, they'll continue to get that regardless of the RHID. Where the RHID increment comes in, as Quentin alluded to, is once the housing starts getting built on there, the value of that property is gonna go up. So once again, the property taxes are gonna be levied on that increased value. To the extent that those property taxes came from that original base value, those taxes are still distributed normally. To the extent that the taxes come from that increment, basically the value above and beyond what that base value is, those go into a special fund to be held by the city of Pittsburgh. And those taxes on that increment, that incremental value, the city can actually use those to help pay the cost for eligible expenses and public improvements related to the rural housing incentive district. In this, this particular case, what the city has done is part of its resolution that's in front of you, as well as the development plan that's being put together, the development agreement that's being put together, is it actually lists specifically, okay, here are the improvements that are gonna be eligible to be reimbursed from that RHID revenue. And basically, kind of to our, to our conversation earlier, that will end either when fifteen years is up or all of those eligible expenses have been paid off from the increment, whichever happens first. So it's a maximum of fifteen years, but if the development goes really well, the property taxes, the, the property values increase really well, the property taxes from that come in at a higher rate than maybe was originally anticipated, and those eligible expenses get paid off quicker than that fifteen years, then that RHID could serve its purpose and go away in a short amount of time. So that's kind of the theory behind what, what this process is. In essence, it's all a reimbursement from the city, so the city isn't, the, the cost that we're talking about here, the city is not fronting any of that money. It's all going to be paid from the developer. And what the developer is gonna have to do is basically turn in, um, requests for reimbursement to the city, which the city will analyze to make sure that they are actual cost paid and that those costs actually relate to some of the eligible expenses that were set forth in those agreements. To the extent that they match up, then the city can use those RHID funds to reimburse those eligible expenses. The city will only be required to use money from that RHID fund. So let's say, for instance, there's a situation where maybe there's only fifty thousand dollars in the RHID fund, and there are requests for reimbursements for seventy thousand dollars. And they're all good, good eligible expenses, but it's for seventy, and you've only got fifty in the bank. You're only required to pay the fifty. As more RHID revenue comes in, then you can use the additional funds to pay off the balance. But the city is not required, and there's no sort of obligation on the city to dip into any other source of funds to pay for those eligible expenses, only from those RHID funds. That's kind of the big picture of how the RHID process works. Specifically for the city, where you're at right now is there's a resolution for consideration required by state statute. What this resolution does is it basically alerts the public that the city is declaring. What this resolution does is it basically alerts the public that the city is declaring an intent to form this rural housing incentive district. It's declaring the intent to enter into a development plan and a development agreement with P&amp;L Development in this case, who's the developer of the property. And those agreements and that plan really set forth the details of how both the RHID process is going to work, what the plan is for the development, um, you know, of that area and, and basically how everything will work together. The resolution will also set the date for a public hearing that will be held. Right now it's anticipated to be held on September 25th. At that public, public hearing, there will be an opportunity for the public to provide any comments, ask any questions. At the close of the public hearing, there will be an ordinance to be considered by the city commission to actually establish the RHID district at that time. So that all happened at the September 25th meeting. After that meeting, that ordinance will have to be mailed to the county to let them know what's going on, as well as to the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education of the school district to let them know that the RHID is being established. There's a, basically a period that will end by the end of October. And assuming that there's no affirmative action taken against the RHID at that point, the RHID is established for the city of Pittsburgh. And then basically that's when their, um, that new property tax unit will be determined at the county level so that those property taxes then can be diverted to the proper place, whether they're on the base or whether they're on the increment. That'll happen basically by the end of October. So that's kind of a lot of information, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions or provide any comments that you may have.
Garth, I've got a couple.
Okay.
You could go ahead, girl.
Oh, I was just going to say that was incredibly well presented. Thank you.
That was one, one thing I was going to say too. I think not only for us up here, also for the people out there sitting and watching this in their living rooms. It was very clear and really was, uh, great. Two things.
Yes.
This RHI development, it only pertains to this one development?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Number two, uh, you say the city is going to collect and amass this, the monies to pay for acceptable expenses?
Yes.
At what time is this accumulation of money to start?
It, it will start, it will start with the levy of taxes that begin basically after the creation of the district.
So it starts basically immediately?
Yeah. Now, there's, there's a question and, and this would probably be a question for the county clerk to whether that is going, whether they will be able to create that property tax unit for this, for in essence, this tax year, you know, for the 2018, 2019.
If it's this tax year and next tax year, but it's not at the end of this 15 years?
No. No, it, it'll, it'll be an ongoing process.
Okay.
So if, if this thing does last for the entire 15 years, basically for that 15 years, that increment, the, the tax revenue from the increment, it, it's all collected by the county because that's how the property taxes work. But then the county will send the amount of money on that increment to a special fund to be held by the city. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And again, really a great presentation. We should have had you up here earlier.
This document in front of us, um, references phase one consistently. So do we have to go back and do this again for phase two and phase three?
So the, the thought process was when we originally started this was working with the city that we would do kind of one master set of documents for the entire approximately 150 unit development. Kind of working through some of that and, and some of the experience we have is that we've, we've worked with some other cities on this and a lot of times it, they have found that it makes more sense to break it up into individual phases so that, um, you know, each phase can get its own 15 years. That the problem you could run into is if you have a single project for 150 houses, well, house number 150 might not get built until year 11. And if you can only go 15 years, you've only, you know, in essence, got four years for the end of that. So by breaking it up into phases, each new phase can start its own new 15-year clock and reap a, a bigger benefit from that time period. Yes.
You said 150 houses. I thought it was 135 houses.
It's, it's, it's approximate and I know some of this kind of depends on some of the, some of the changes that may have happened in the plan and kind of some of the, some of the plan. In 100, 130, 140 maybe more appropriate right now. In my mind originally, we had talked about 150, so that's kind of the number that stuck. I, I know that that's a, a fluid number that, that isn't set in stone right now.
This document is for 60.
This phase one is for approximately 60 houses, yes. Yep.
So, um, that Exhibit C outlines the, the expenses that
Yes.
the developer would then, um, submit to that fund for, um, payment. Is that?
Give me one second. I have too many documents up here to look through.
112.
Uh, yes. Exhibit Z, Exhibit C to the Development Agreement. This is the listing of the estimated eligible expenses. So basically this list that adds up to in the aggregate two and a half million dollars, these are the eligible expenses that will be able to be paid from the RHID. Once again, once they have actually been paid by the developer and the request with, um, with backup information has been turned into the city. Yeah, this, this is the, this is what those eligible expenses are going to be.
Are there any further questions?
I, I just think based on some of the conversation that has happened here tonight, it's important to point out on page 97 that part of this, um, indicates that the developer will have no litigation proceeding or investigation pending to the knowledge of the developer threatening against Silverback. So, um, and also, um, in addition, no litigation proceeding or investigation is pending to the knowledge of the developer. So I know there seems to be a concern that, you know, we, we haven't, um, the, on the integrity of the developer, but in my research, which is minimal, I haven't found anything on Better Business Bureau or any lawsuits or, so I don't think that the website page is enough to impugn their integrity, so.
There's no further discussion? Is there a motion to be had?
I move to approve.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, Dr. Garth.
Thank you, guys. Item B, Funding Agreement, P&amp;L Development LLC. Consider entering into a funding agreement with P&amp;L Development LLC for the development of real property by constructing the first phase of the Silverback Landing Residential Development into approximately 60 single-family houses and all related internal infrastructure improvements. Quentin again.
Yeah. Okay, so this funding agreement is between, uh, P&amp;L and the city for P&amp;L to, um, front of $25,000 in, in the beginning to pay for, uh, basically the, the costs that we incur to set up the, the RHID and, um, and basically Garth's time. That's it.
Pretty uncomplicated.
I'd just like to make a comment. We've heard a lot of questions tonight about this Silverback Landing having to do with a stormwater runoff and the possible flooding it could cause. Originally, we was talking about phase one and 50, I don't know, 50 some houses at the time. It was said that a box culvert would take care of the runoff from 50 houses. I asked, uh, Mickey Vena slash Richard Greer, or however you say that, what his thoughts was. And he said, and, uh, during phase two and phase three, that he would contact the college about possibly acquiring some property to build some detention ponds for phase two and phase three. And I haven't heard if, how that went. I don't know, uh, how to get a hold of Richard Greer and I haven't heard from Mickey Vena about these detention ponds. But for me, I think all this stormwater runoff issue is a big, it's a big deal. A stormwater runoff and a possible flooding. And I know Mickey, if he's in big cities, it's a bigger deal in cities. And he knows what he has to do. But he comes here and we got a box culvert. It's supposed to take care of 50 houses and now it's went up to 60. And he said that he would talk to the college possibly about buying some property to put in some detention, retention ponds, whatever you call them, for the phase two and phase three. I haven't heard enough answers as to that. So any other votes tonight on Silverback Landing by myself would be in the negative until, uh, I haven't had enough information about the stormwater runoff and the possible flooding that this will cause.
Mayor Commissioners, um, so with regards to item B, I think it's important to note, this is not a standard piece of a RID. This is something that Henry requires usually. Anytime we engage in a development, the same thing we do with a conce, a casino, the idea is instead of having the taxpayers front the money, um, obviously the RID is a very, I won't say confusing, but it's hard to explain. Garth does a fantastic job, which is why on a project this big, we, we thought it was important to have an expert do the RID documents, um, although some of us laymen can't explain them as well as, uh, we should. We'll continue to get better at that. But the funding agreement is, is strictly a way to protect us from incurring a bunch of legal and administrative costs related to something that quite frankly, um, is very confusing and, and expertise is something you want to pay for. Uh, the beauty of the funding agreement is we won't be paying for it. Garth's work will be in, in essence, paid for by the developer. So I, I want to applaud Henry for pointing that out because this isn't just another standard box you check on this. This is one to protect us from, uh, getting into a situation where we didn't want, didn't think that we needed to pay, uh, for the expertise because it was financially a restraint and it would have probably cost us in doing the paperwork right. So, um, thanks, Henry, and, uh, sorry to interrupt you, Quentin.
If there's no further comments or questions, I move approval.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Quentin.
I have a question based on some of the information we got from Matt. In his response to Bill, uh, who reviews the stormwater program permit, which notice of intent have to be filed with KDHE, but we're premature in the process for them to do that, is that?
Yeah. Dr. Bailey or Pete, you want to? I just assume Dr. Bailey took a shot at it since, uh, Pete's the contractor, but it's okay.
An NOI is what, what we submit to KDHNE. And that's done with, when the plans are completed. Plans are completed for the roadway coming up and that's, uh, the, that NOI has been approved. And that's the box culvert. The box culvert's actually designed for the entire development, not just for phase one.
Pete, what's an NOI?
NOI is a notice of intent.
Let's explain this.
Okay. Notice of intent is basically in every set of plans, we put together a, uh, uh, stormwater prevention plan. And that is what's looked at by the state. It's sediment control. Okay? And that's during construction. And then what we're required from the contractor is to put together what they call a SWPPP, which is a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. That's put together by the contractor based on the erosion control shown in the plans. He puts that together, that document, part of that document is the NOI, which is the approval from the Department of Com, or Department of Health and Environment to say that they approved the erosion control plan that's in there. And then the city's responsibility then is to go after rain, check with the contractor, make sure that, uh, everything is up and, uh, done according to regulations.
So the SWPPP is really, uh, for the phase, the construction phase to make sure?
That is a construction phase. So is the NOI. Okay. Those, that, those are all sediment control during construction.
Okay.
By state law?
Yes. Anything over one acre.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you, Pete. Onto item C. Blake, you're up. Loan request, P&amp;L Development LLC. Consider the recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, the EDAC, to provide a loan to P&amp;L Development LLC in the amount of $450,000 to be repaid over a period of five years at an interest rate of 3% with the, the funds to be utilized in relation to the construction of the Silverback Landing Development.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if, if I may, I, I think I'll just go ahead and open by answering a question that was asked earlier. Mr. Vena had originally asked for the repayment to be over a three-year period. It was actually RVest Bank that came back to the EDAC because originally Mr. Vena had planned to pay both of his loans back if, if he was granted the, the city loan. He was going to pay both the RVest and city loans concurrently within three years. The, the big concern there was that it would use up all of his available cash and if there were some big ticket items that came along, um, essentially the bank was concerned that it could choke the project before it ever really got started. So the request was to extend that repayment from three to five years and with the city getting interest only for the first three years. And then basically Mr. Vena would pay half of the principal in year four, half of the principal in year five. So the EDAC, knowing how important this project is to our community and to economic development and the fact that the city actually collects more interest, if, if he has 3% coming in for five years as opposed to three years, uh, the EDAC concurred with that recommendation. And so the recommendation that I bring you tonight is, as you stated, a $450,000 loan to support the P&amp;L Development, uh, interest-only payments for the first three years and then principal reduction for years four and five, with Mr. Vena signing a personal guarantee and the city, as we do with any other or most other economic development projects that I'm aware of, uh, second position behind RVest Bank on all 60 of the lots.
I think it's also important to, to point out, and I don't know that I've seen this document before, maybe we haven't had one come, um, on page 127, what the EDAC, um, requires of the, um, requister.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, it's...
We, and we do this, again, with any, any business that's requesting, um, an RLF loan, we, we ask them to provide, uh, not only personal tax returns for the past three years, but the business's tax returns, a balance sheet, uh, showing what the, the applicant is worth. Because the EDAC takes their, their charge very seriously of being good stewards of the taxpayer's money. So they obviously want to make sure that the, uh, the projects are good for the community, but that they're also, uh, a good credit risk for the, the city of Pittsburgh as well. And as, as they do with all of their projects, they did a lot of due diligence on this, looked over a lot of documents and asked a lot of good questions in coming to this recommendation.
You know, one thing I wanted to say about this, uh, we've been questioned about, uh, the legitimacy of this developer. And I think that, uh, whatever talents we may have in, uh, in checking him out, I think would pale with the ability of the bank to check him out. The bank is investing a lot of money with him. And I think that, uh, when that happens, uh, it shows that they've done their due diligence also in checking him out. And would give us extra, uh, uh, comfort in going into business with him, which is what we're basically doing.
And, and I, I will point out, even though RVest has, has been working with P&amp;L for a long time, typically RVest will let the city make their recommendation first so that the developer knows exactly what he is requesting. So once you hopefully take action tonight, then RVest Bank will be able to make the final determination on their loan, uh, but they've not given us any indication that, um, that they will not be able to support the project.
And can we be notified that that completes?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Is there any other comments or questions?
If none, I move to approve.
Second.
We have motion to, uh, approve in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake.
Blake.
Conditional use request, permit request, sorry. The Planning Commission slash Board of Zoning Appeals, in its meeting of July 23rd, 2018, voted six to one to recommend governing body approval of a request submitted by Bob Gulfoil, on behalf of Crocan Telephone Cooperative Incorporated, for a conditional use permit under the provisions of Article 30 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to allow a 192-square-foot telecommunications building to be constructed on the property located at 501 West 3rd Street. Cameron.
Thank you. What we're looking at with this is basically, I can't get this thing to slide around for me at all, here we go. The intersection of 3rd and College Street, Waco's immediately here to the right of their building, they've got abandoned, or I guess it's actually still technically live, railroad right-of-way back behind this, there's one residence right here. The property is currently a parking lot. What they're looking at doing with this is, this would be the last of their hubs that they would need to order to continue their fiber network for the city there. They've worked with Waco as to where to put it around that location, this is what was settled, and they'll put a fence immediately around, it's a 12-by-16 building, they'll have a fence right around it for aesthetics as well as for security.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
No, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Conditional use permit request. The Planning Commission slash Board of Zoning Appeals, in its meeting of July 23rd, 2018, voted unanimously to recommend governing body approval of a request submitted by Jim Villamaria, on behalf of CDL, for a conditional use permit for 12 months, under the provisions of Article 30 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance, to allow the construction of a parking lot for heavy trucks and equipment on the property located at 215 West 11th Street.
What, looking at here is, this is between Walnut and Pine Street, 11th Street is right there, CDL's property is there, immediately to the north. CDL has grown so much with their activity here in town, that they've actually outgrown their existing site, and so they're looking at trying to acquire property there to the south, they've been acquired, this area that's shaded there. What they were looking to do with this request is to be able to park their equipment and trucks on that area there. Right now, they've, the Planning Commission has asked that they only do, this be granted for one year. The reason for that is, the overall intent is, CDL is looking at trying to acquire the rest of that block, so they could go in and do a complete rezone of that area. The request is, was approved, allowing them to go in with rock rather than in asphalt or concrete, that would be required in a commercial setting, but is allowed in industrial is rock, which is what they have just immediately across the street. And so, the Planning Commission asked that this only be granted for a year, and they come back within that year for review, or during that year, come in for a rezone for that entire block.
So, what is the likelihood that they build this parking lot, and then nothing else happens, and the year is up, and then there's just a parking lot there?
Given their enthusiasm, I find it highly unlikely.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
So, and this is my ignorance, but since we're... Reza, or changing the zoning?
No, this is only a conditional use, is what's being asked.
Okay.
It's, that allows for parking lots and whatnot in other areas that are not zoned for it, and so this is what that specific request is for.
So are homes on that block been notified, is that part of this process?
Right, the CDL's been in contact with all of them, trying to look at about acquiring their property, so they know this is coming, they got notified of the conditional use request, and I don't believe anyone showed up with that.
What opposition from the homeowners to this request?
No, there was not.
I move...
Go ahead.
I move to approve.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you.
Non-agenda reports and requests.
No, we don't have anything from staff. I do want to acknowledge Jamie's work on the budget, we just kind of zip through that every year, 54 million bucks, not insignificant.
No big deal.
And, you know, it really, we're talking to one of the reporters today, and they're like, "Do you guys have anybody comment on the budget, or will you tonight?", and I said, "I've been here six years, I've never had anybody comment on the budget other than Commissioners, so." It is out there, it's online, it's a solid document, it's got a ton of information, and good job to Jamie for doing it.
Absolutely. All right, if there's nothing else, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.